Bonsoir tout le monde. Bienvenue à notre...
Good evening and welcome to our first meeting of January 2025 in this new year. For people in the crowd, there's also like translation devices.
Simultaneous translation devices for there if you wish. Donc pour les membres du Conseil.
First, I always start by saying like we are gathering on the unceded traditional territory of the Mignot people who sent us to sign a treaty of peace and friendship with the British Crown in the 1700s. Mister Clerk, we do have quorum this evening. And are there any council members who would like to declare a conflict of interest for the items on this agenda? Only two, thank you. I just need a motion to adopt the agenda. Move par député maire, c'est secondé par conseiller Emily O'Brien. Questions on the motion? If not, all in favor saying aye. Against nay? Motion carried, thank you. We only have two items on the agenda for this special meeting. First is the sworn in of the Wardoue councillor John Steves. So I will talk in English just for him.
We're happy tonight to welcome Mister John Steves as the new councillor for Ward Three, representing the Shadia Cape area. And this will fill the seat that was vacated under some sad circumstances with councillor Murray Lloyd's passing last August. So, John, you can now come forward to the table and sign all the necessary documentations with the clerk in order to get officially sworn in as councillor.
Wait. So before we start, as clerk, it gives me an extra... You can sit down just for a while. I'll go through a document before. Mister Mayor decided to go quickly on that tonight, but I'll give you just a quick introduction for what we're doing tonight. So it gives me great pleasure to be among you to preside tonight the ceremony of the oath of office of the newest member of the municipal council of Ward Three, Shadia Cape, Mister John Steves. To start the ceremony, I would like to share with you all the correspondence we received from election and B after the election in December 2024. I've got a copy in my hand, but I'm going to show you directly on screen. I'm not sure. I know it's not really, really easy to read, but basically it gives us the information that Mister Steves was elected by acclamation after all the verification. And it's signed, of course, by the municipal returning officer for the election of December 9, 2024. Pursuant to section 58.1 of the Local Governance Act, I would now ask Mister Steve, that is already sitting down, now to take the oath of entry as provided in the regulation 2018-52-Form 2. It's from the province of New Brunswick. So I'm going to go forward with you, John, for that.
Perfect. So. Give you one. Can you just say this one? Actually, you need to have it. So raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
John Steves.
John Steves.
Of Shadia Cape.
Of Shadia Cape.
Solemnly affirm that.
Solemnly affirm that.
I am, to the best of my knowledge.
I am, to the best of my knowledge.
And belief.
And belief.
Qualified for the office of councillor for the local government of Shadia.
Qualified for the office of government of the local...
Government of Shadia.
Government of Shadia.
To which office I have been elected.
To which office I've been elected.
I accept the office of councillor.
I accept the office of councillor.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
I will diligently.
I will diligently.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge to the best of my ability the duties of the office.
Discharge the best of my duties, the ability of the office.
As may be imposed on me by law.
As may be imposed on me by law.
And?
And?
I will follow the code of conduct.
I will follow the code of conduct.
Established by a bylaw of the local government.
Established by the bylaw of the local government.
Solemnly affirmed before me at Shadia in the company of Westmoreland, province of New Brunswick, on January 13, 2025. Get it done. Yeah. I'll remind after. Just a second here. That's the code of conduct. There is the unofficial agreement. So just initial in the first one. And something. Open that just a second time to me. Initial first one. Congratulations. Do, I'm going to sign those and give you a copy. And now, they see.
Congratulations, John. Please come join us around our council table. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you very much.
For better, for worse, you're sitting right there between those two. But anyway. We wish you the best of luck and we thank you for coming forward and filling in the role for the remainder of the term.
Next item, 5.2 is strategic plan for the town of Shadia. So we have the consultant who led those consultations and did the development of the plan, Ben Chambault. He said he needs some help. He said they want to have it. No problem, we can arrange that. Then it's easy to see like the slide. They're having a dress little technical shoes. After a couple of technical problems, we'll do it but from a salesman's computer. So. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the invitation. It's a pleasure to be here. Happy New Year for 2025. Sorry, I do not have my energies. I had a virus for the last five, six days. So I'm here this evening like to update you on the strategic plan. So the next slide, I will do it very quickly and then we'll call back on the discussions on the items you would like to develop on. So quickly to talk about the consultation project, so the survey results and the proposed change and the key messages. Next slide. This is a consultation. Next slide, just to give you a little bit of context. On the perfect storm, we were like when we did the process for consultation for strategic planning. First in 2024 was the first full year of the post-COVID era. So we underestimate like the impact of the COVID had on our psychology, health and physical health. And while we were living through like the post-COVID era, the southeastern region of New Brunswick and one of Shadia was going through like the strongest economic and population growth ever. And it caused a lot of change at a very difficult period. So we had strike one, strike two. And on top of this, we had like just a third strike in term of adjustment for change. Was the municipal reform that was held at the same time where at the time where we were putting, implementing a new municipal plan and a new strategic plan we did not have for 12 years in Shadia. So it was really like the perfect storm. And it was a unique context. And we knew like the consultation would be difficult. And in fact, indeed, they weren't as part of the game. So. We have seven consultation sessions. On average, over 50 people by session, 240, 400 people like total, attended like seven consultation sessions, like four in each of the four corners of the new Shadia and plus one with community organization and one with the business community and one with the staff. And then we did a survey, 110 participants. So when we combine it like a total, we're beating 450, 500 people who participated to the consultation process. As I said, to all the people who participated in filling cards and giving feedback. So I collected all of those cards, about five inches, I think. So I wrote handwritten, like word by word, everything that was written on those cards and each has 27 pages of feedback, comment and suggestions. So in terms and I put them in terms of key messages. Highlight and suggestion. So key messages, so we go to the next slides. I could spend an hour to talk, discussing this slide, but it's not, it's not the case this evening. And clearly, like some teams were always coming back like in those sessions I facilitated. So environment and climate change definitely is one of them. Those are concern and the taxation and affordability concern and the cost of living inflation, communication, like balance and sustainable road came out often. Cultural identity, like art support, public safety, inspiring, strengthening. Those team came back. These are the key messages that came out. In terms of concerns. You will see like, so some teams are always coming back. So they're... People were concerned about the public safety, the increase of vandalism in the areas, the lack of resources and infrastructure in the contents of such a growth as we experienced last year. Environmental concerns, employees wellness, communication in terms of the broad term and internally, cultural identity and civic pride, affordable housing. And you see like the series of the concern which was compatible with the key messages of the slide. If we go to the next slides and we talk about the teams on the key suggestion that we had during those seven sessions with the citizen and the business communities, community organization and employees. For governance, transparency and communication. So these teams came out in every session. So it seems like you also like mentioned in our sessions. We want to get to improve those themes. And effectively, well, those teams were mentioned like in the community at this broader term. Reinforcement, strengthening infrastructure and community services, like environmental sustainability and preservation. What we have, people were happy and the vision we're talking about coastal community and recognizing the leadership within the council. Our strategic position, like the ocean, which make our quality of life unique, our branding. And it was important for them. Economic development and workforce retention. It came out, it's important for the community, for the business people. Like economic development has to be done in a healthy way. We thought it was too fast like in the last couple of years with the historical growth we experienced. Experience our community, it hurt. It hurted like a lot of individuals. So then the housing, cultural preservation and inclusivity. In a nutshell, it give you like an idea of the concerns. So if we go to the next slide quickly, like the survey result, I will not spend a lot of time because the survey only validated what I heard in the public session. So we had 110 participants. So you see like the profile of the participant. If we go to the next slide, it simply like to say. So the survey result of the 110 participating only reinforce the key messages heard during the consultation session. So nothing was mentioned those that I didn't hear during the public session. So I will not spend a whole lot of time on this pillar. So we'll go directly on the next one. In terms of proposed changes, if we go to the next slide. The... So the vision was well received. So some wanted to make it more punchy. Were there any way to add like an adjective in the vision statement? So people understand we want to keep it short and easy like to remember. Said, is there any way we could maybe add one word? We could maybe cover all the priorities and the pillars? If we go to the next time. Like viable and that the term was mentioned many, many times by many participants in all the sessions all over like the new Shadia and also with the staff. So the suggestion I'm making that we add viable to the vision statement, like a viable coastal community where everyone belongs. If we go to the next one, like the mission statement, to build an inclusive community by providing quality services to all, leverage our strategic location, our unique assets and cultural diversity. And people like the mission like to build was not maybe the verb that was unanimous. It was all the concept of collaboration. People were saying that could... To be maybe more present and to maybe feel it more in the mission statement. And leveraging, well, the French was not that good. If we go to the next one, the next slide. The proposed mission, so my recommendation is to modify. So it would read to foster an inclusive community by delivering high quality services to all, leveraging our strategic location, distinctive strength, Acadian heritage and our rich cultural diversity. So this is like the proposed mission statement. If we look at the values. So the values were really well received. Empowerment, in English, a little bit easier to present. Empowerment, while the transition was not great, but empowerment is the one that people were wondering. So what you have 10, 15 minutes like to explain the value, it's maybe like we choose another one. And you will have to remember like we had a very lengthy discussion on the values and we had a lot of good options. Wanted to keep it short, but one word, one word like we discussed for a long time. I don't know why we did not choose it, the concept of collaboration. So we mentioned it in our action, but it was not really like captured in our values. If we go to the next slide, so my recommendation would be to change empowerment for collaboration. Voila. So the next slide, what our vision, mission and value. I just read those three of them. So we'll go directly like to the next slide and we'll go back like to them if we need to. The strategic pillars. If we look at this three strategic we had, like the lifestyle, sustainable development and operational excellence. Lifestyle, like everybody agreed like with this one. Shadia is renowned like international for its quality of light, like beaches and access to ocean. So we have unique assets that are clearly our local branding, provincial and national branding. So it was unanimous. So the operational excellence, we said, could we do better like in terms of governance and financial management in terms of assets management and financial and physical resources? So this one was well received. Sustainable development, it's where like people were really very loud and very vocal. Economic development, but sustainable development. So we tried to put it on the same pillar. A lot of pieces of the puzzle, which was not always compatible. And I agree with this, but in a context, in this context, I would suggest if we go to the next one, like our three pillars become four pillars. Sustainable development is simply like development. And environment was certainly like the team that came out the most often during the seven public sessions become a strategic pillar. So from true, we'd go to four, the four were the environment, lifestyle, development and operational excellence. Next slide. Next slide. So I will not read it because we just went through. I will skip maybe all those slides like to go directly to... So the priorities for each pillar. So the first priority. So there are four pillars. So the four pillars are, they're all important. So it's important to mention it. It's not because one is listed as the fourth one, it's not important. Then the one was listed at first. They're all, they all have the same importance and they're all interrelated. Under environment right now, so there are three priorities, municipal plan. And then a climate change adaptation strategy for the new community of Shadia. There's a lot of work that was done on this one. And the net zero initiative. So these would be the three priorities under this pillar. If we go to the second pillar, like lifestyle. So we have five actions. Like recreational assets, cultural activities, essential services, downtown and tourism. So development, so that's where like before we have environment and six priorities. Now we have five because the environment became a pillar. But without any doubt, it's essential like for the economic and social prosperity of a community to have in place like the municipal infrastructures, land development, especially in the context of a bigger territory following the municipal reform and in the context also of a bigger territory. We have an industrial park on our territory, so we have to take care of it. And we also have like to take care of our businesses and try to attract new ones. Complement, to complement the ecosystem, we have a committee. Made need by helping them with the most important challenge, which is the manpower. So this summarizes the second pillars. Third pillar, resources, governance and fiscal responsibility, communications and marketing. In fact, this is a fourth pillar. So human resources, physical and financial resources under governance and fiscal responsibility and communication and marketing are the three priorities of this fourth pillar. And with this, the next steps, well, is to get your fee, your authorization to continue the process. And then it will do, the operational plan will be done internally. That would be the next step with the team. Mister Mayor, in a nutshell, this is my presentation. Seventeen minutes, five seconds. Thank you. You did not believe me, eh? I think I started, I noted your start time. So thank you very much for this present, this short presentation. And we know like there's many other work like behind those themes. The number of hours you worked in the consultation. And it's great like to see like a strategic plan that comes out with the feedback from the public. And so they agreed with some things. And it's great, we were able to confirm this. Were there anything that were absence? The environment has a major place like in the town of Shadia. There's still a lot of work to do like the operational plan. So it's really like with the staff. And it will, so they will, they will work on this and with your help. Just to make sure like we always focus on this, on these steps. So we have a resolution to adopt this plan. I only need a mover and second it. So we can ask a question and then discuss. Counselors, would they be, can you read the resolution? 5.2 strategic plan for the town. Be resolved that municipal council of the town should adopt the strategic plan developed by the... Beat resolve that municipal council of the town should adopt the strategic plan developed by the consultant Champagne Inc. Move by Councilor Joyeux Dépries, seconded by Councilor Paul Boudreau. Questions on the motion. Councilor Paul Boudreau, just a question like to DCAO, like your personal plan. Could we get like details when it will be starting? So what is your strategy of your strategy? Maybe just to give you an indication, well, it will be to the council to adopt the plan. So we're trying to do it this evening. So once the plan is adapted, like Ben and myself and my team will sit down and develop like the operational plan. Who's responsible for what and what is the timeline? We just, we said like we should give ourselves four to six weeks like to work on the operational plan. So if this evening like the plan is adopted. We start to work and we see the availability with Ben for this work, then we'll be able to get back to the council like to adopt the plan. What is the application of the municipal council? Because there are some priorities around the table, so people have different priorities than others. So how would you like to get the council involved? Like the council plays a role, like it's the administration. The execute your personal plan, but it's still a document that belongs to the council. The council has to adopt like your personal plan, so we can execute it, execute it, so we can prepare it. So if we have to adjust things and accordingly, we're ready to have the discussion with the council. So I have to be honest with the, with the organizational capacity. So we can work on this and we have to adjust accordingly, we'll do it. But our goal as administration is to do like the bulk of the work, to present you something. Excellent, so the last question. And I think there's a lot of similarities with this. Would be a question for another day. So we're not ready like to, so thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Councilor Patricia Boux-Jevaris. So once the plan is adopted this evening, so will it be made available for our citizens? Because a lot of people like attended the sessions and absolutely, this is the goal. So we had, we're already working on to embellish it, to make it more presentable. So we have a draft that we got last week and of course, we were waiting like to see if it would be adopted and if it's adopted, so we intend to. To publish it like more better than a word document. So it will be done. So we'll see by the end of the month, I guess something should come out. So this is our goal anyway. It will be made available on the website, people can consult it. So it will be done with the colors and branding with the Chediak logo and all that. Councilor Alain Comrie. Thank you, Mister Mayor, so just a question to our CEO. I will continue like with the concern of the Paul. Maybe it's a long word like. I understand that we'll probably adopt like the strategic plan this evening. So the reality like is the operational plan that is extremely important. This is like the meat on the bone and I understand this is the role like for the direction to, to put some, some meat on the bone. But I wouldn't want for the administration to go too far. By developing like the strategic plan, the operational plan, Mister Mayor, without consulting the council. Because time is important for everyone. And to have a plan and we say no, it would be a loss six weeks. And maybe the consultant would like it in another six weeks, but what we still have like to, to look at the dollars and money from our taxpayers. And it's important, Mister Mayor, to this operational plan because I don't know if the councilors understand or do not understand. So once we accept like the operational plan. This is our strategic plan, like the roadmap, like after the elections. And it will be difficult like to change, like decide what we want or what we do not want. So we have to adjust and as a team and we are comfortable with where we're going. And if we waited, we wait too long before we consult. I'm concerned it would, it wouldn't go in the right direction. And there's still some work to do. This is my concern. I will let the administration. And I'm also always only mentioning like a concern for the process because it will be important. Once we say yes, it will be very difficult to change. Thank you, Councilor Comrie. By doing like a three day strategic plan. So the operational plan, usually like the team, they have a good idea of the council. So we do the actions and, and the goal to reach for a dash and then the deadline. The budget. And we go back to the council with this one. There's always there's some back and forth, but it doesn't take two weeks. So those six week, half a day for adjustment, we can see no collectively, we would prefer this one. Instead of saying yes, so what would be done in 2026? So there was some little adjustment, but it's not six weeks, I guess. Just minor adjustments and usually after this, like it's every like 12, 12 months, the council go through the strategic plan. And it's not six months, it's a half a day. So the first edition is always the most difficult one, then the maintenance, it goes really well. Thank you very much. On this note. All in favor saying five, saying aye, against nay. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much for your time, Mister Champeau. You're welcome, so you did a good job, you stayed within your time and lots of notes. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, move by Councilor Jean-Michel Gana. We are standing adjourned.